We're going to call to order this meeting of Oxford Preparatory Academy, a regular meeting of the Board of Directors. This May 8, 2018, four o'clock PM, open session, five o'clock PM, closed session. We'll call it to order at four seventeen PM. Meeting location, Oxford Preparatory Academy, Saddleback Valley Campus, 22882 Lumont Drive, Lake Forest, California. And teleconference location, Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County Campus, 23000 Villa Santa Maria, Mission Viejo, California. The public, including a public attending a teleconference location, are invited to address the Board regarding items listed on the agenda. Comments on an agenda item will be accepted during consideration of that item or prior to consideration of that item in the case of a closed session item.
Okay. Here I am.
Anyhow, please turn in comment cards to the Board Secretary prior to the item you wish to speak on. Preliminary item called to order, roll call. Raymond Jackson, Vice Chair.
Present.
Priscilla Trichet, Secretary.
Present.
Joshua Teepel, Treasurer.
Assistant.
Mary Campos, Member.
Present.
And Joseph Haney, Chairman, present. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Raymond, would you lead us?
With pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
Place your right hand over your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
It's not a race.
It's not. Tortoise wins. But that's a myth. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda for regular board meeting for May 8, 2018. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove or otherwise address?
There are several items on this agenda that are not going to be up for action at this time, but I do want to have some discussion around them. And we are pulling the civility item. Our legal counsel has some changes that they want to make to it.
Okay. So that would be item D three. Any other proposed changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion on that matter?
I'll make a motion to approve as revised.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as modified say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. We now move into open session. First up is communications, starting with comments from the Board. Ms. Campos, we'll start at your end.
I have no comments.
Ms. Trichet.
I have none.
Mr. Jackson?
I love my board mates.
Duly noted. One thing I would like is to direct staff to form a communications committee to work with Bertelli Public Affairs to help in working and crafting our message and getting it out. And I would like to propose that Ms. Campos head that committee.
You do know that if you are forming a committee as a board, that it's, has to follow Brown Act procedures, whereas if you direct me to form a committee?
That's why I said I'd like to direct staff.
Okay. Okay. Then I would be happy to get that done.
Thank you. And I think that wraps up our comments from the Board of Directors. Takes us now to item two, comments from the interim executive director.
Just one comment. I was requested to look in to see whether we could post our videos of the board meetings in, incomplete video rather than just the auditory component. And the answer is yes, we can. So starting with this meeting, all of our meetings will now be posted as a video.
Yay.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right. Next item under open session is consent. There are no items for this category, which takes us to item C, comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. We have none. Which takes us to item D. We are moving at a good clip. Discussion and/or information and/or action. First item, approved contract between Oxford Preparatory Academy and Think Together to provide a before and after school childcare program. The Board will consider approving a contract with Think Together for before and after school childcare. Contract is presented to the Board with the revision requested at a previous board meeting, removing the indemnification language. If approved, the program will be slated to begin as soon as licensing is completed for both campuses. Presented by Dr. Lisa Hall.
Hi.
Hello.
If you look at your board packet, you're looking at Think Together Contract behind that tab. The indemnification language was reviewed by legal and it is actually quite benign. And legal indicated that indemnification language to that end is common and may well be with the type of program in our best interest because it's mutual indemnification. And it does have the terminology that one of our board members expressed concern with. His, his concern was mostly, and I apologize, I'm looking for the spot. So it is mutual indemnification on page three. And we are not holding anyone harmless for negligent or willful acts. And that was the, that was Mr. Teepel's concern, is that we should not indemnify anyone for negligent acts. And so the terminology does include that we are not indemnifying anyone for willful or, pardon me, for willful or negligent acts. The last page, behind the signature page, is the fee schedule that Mrs. Campos had And it does mirror our current fee schedule. And they do continue to call our students champs. And it outlines that our staff members do not pay on their regular workdays.
And is that how it is now?
Yes. If they want, if, if staff members would like their children to participate in activities that are occurring, for instance, intercession or during the summer, they pay for that. We provide the childcare during, on their workdays without fee.
And when it's we provide, does that mean that the school pays instead of they pay? Or does that mean that this group doesn't charge us at all?
This group just isn't going to charge us at all.
Okay.
Much like we do. We just don't, we don't charge our, we don't charge our employees, but they do have to be signed up through our billing system. And it's just noted every month that they don't pay.
Do I have a motion at this time?
I'm sorry, I need to say that we need to make the motion with the indemnification language intact based on the way that the agenda is written. I apologize.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the contract with the indemnification language intact? And then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? You look like you want to say something.
No comments.
No comments? Okay. I guess we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, this motion carries four to zero. Brings us to our next item on the agenda, item two, approve new admission and enrollment policy. The Board of Directors is committed to safeguarding the schools by ensuring that policies and procedures are updated regularly and shared with Oxford's stakeholders and authorizers in a timely manner, ensuring transparency. The new admissions and enrollment policy is aligned with both charter petitions and has been reviewed by both advisory councils and administration and is brought to the Board for approval. Presented by Kathleen Dougherty.
So this is the final version and this is the correct version. Evidently, the other version got uploaded to begin with. And this is the version that has been looked at by multiple eyes on both campuses. And the final version came down to the admissions folks on both campuses so that they could take a look at it. It is aligned to both of the charters. And so where language deviates, you'll see it says, please look at the charter for specific language, because that was the easiest way to do that. The main difference between this and what the charter says, and this, by the way, has been approved and vetted by legal counsel, is that there is now language in here that talks about the pre-admission procedures and that any information that is false will result in a denial of admission. And then down further, it talks about the fact that any falsification of admission will result in denial of admission yet again. And it also says that an admitted student will be removed from the school if failure to comply with these procedures or documents contained is false. And another statement that says siblings, if the first child enrolled does not attend the school, the sibling placement will be revoked for the second. And these are important components that our legal counsel said had to be in place. So this policy, although is a replication of the charters, is now an official, will be an official policy once approved.
Do I have a motion to approve the new admission policy, admission and enrollment policy?
I move to approve the new admission requirement policy.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
So this is very timely, right? We just went through a, we just went-
We just went through the lottery process, yes, on both school sides.
Okay. So this is, so this will address any sort of irregularities in the, in that process, right? So if somebody misrepresents some information.
Absolutely. And Joseph, I thought you had a correction that you would like to see made.
I do. Right now, we only have an independent study program on the SOC campus. And I'm not sure if we have plans to add one on the SV campus. But if we did, we'd have to amend this admission and enrollment policy. So what I'd like to propose is on page one, one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet, to strike the parenthetical SOC only. And on page three, delete the first sentence under Article Six. That way, if we do end up with an independent study program here, the admissions and enrollment policy already covers it.
What bullet point? On page two?
Page one.
Page one, the fifth one.
There's a parenthetical.
Got it.
Just strike out this.
Understood.
Bless you.
And since Priscilla made the motion, she would need to revise her motion.
Correct.
With the amendments. Got it. Okay. So basically, this says that if, so if I participate in the lottery and then there, and there's something wrong about it, that I will lose, I'll be voided, right? My, my spot.
I'm sorry, would you restate that?
So if I, if I participate in the lottery, but I falsify some information, that my results, so if I, if I'm placement number fifty-six, as an example, and, and then you discover there's some, something false about it, then I give up my spot and the fifty-seven drops down to fifty-six.
That's correct.
Can we chat? Go ahead.
And Kathleen, this policy was already there, so we just, basically as a board, that's part of our job as well to go through all the policies, review and update and put them up to date, correct?
Yes, although this was not a policy that was in place before. We were relying on the components of the charter. So legal suggested that we put a policy in place that, that gives us direction on, on how to act when certain situations come up. So that's what this is about.
Okay.
But yes, we do update all of our policies regularly as well.
Good.
But this fits nicely into that whole NOV initiative to say, hey, look, we need to dial this thing in and make sure that we've got policies that help us-
Yeah.
Stay true to what our charter says, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Campos?
Nope.
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. So we have a motion to approve the admissions and enrollment policy. Ms. Trichet, would you be interested in removing your motion or amend, and then entering a new motion?
Sure. I remove my previously stated motion. So I move to approve the admission and requirement policy with the amendment of Section Two, I mean, Section Two, Bullet Number Four, and Section Six to strike out SOC only.
Did you mean Bullet Five?
Bullet Five, page one.
Five, I'm sorry. Bullet Five and Five.
And the first sentence on, the whole first sentence on page three?
Correct.
All right. So the motion is to approve the admissions and enrollment policy subject to the modifications set forth by Ms. Trichet. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item four, approve reimbursement of unused educator effectiveness grants. The Board of Directors will consider taking action to reimburse the California Department of Education for unused educator effectiveness funds received prior to the closure of Opa Chino Valley Campus. Presented by Dr. Lisa Hall.
This is the effectiveness grant that we chatted about last time we met. And we were able to identify, soundly identify, that we spent thirty thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents. So the original bill states sixty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars. So we are requesting that we can move forward with payment, repayment of the unused grant that was given to the Chino campus in the amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred three dollars, fifty-four cents. And there is supporting documentation that follows the front page, which is the original invoice.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve reimbursement of unused educator effectiveness grant funds?
I move to approve the refund of the education, what is it called?
Educator Effectiveness.
Sorry, educator effectiveness fund.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Any discussion?
Would you like an explanation?
I would. I think we got an explanation last time about it. But what I would love to see, and I would love to believe more than see, that there's some sort of policy in place to make sure that we can stop giving money back for, for ri, all, any, all things actually. So not just this, but that there's a procedure in place to make sure that when we get money, that there's a schedule to spend it, there's a plan to spend it, there's warnings in place to let us know if we're not spending it, and that there's some sort of mechanism to make sure that, that this does, this is, I'm giggling because this is just crazy that we're giving money back.
I, I think the answer to that is Mr. Diaz.
Yeah.
Oh, I saw him here.
Well, you've hired an experienced executive director and you've hired a very experienced CBO. And between the two of them, any grant funds that come in, they will be keeping a timeline and will be making the appropriate responses to whoever issues the grant to make sure that we're meeting the, the criteria and the deadlines, because that's what this was about. It was failure to turn in our report of expenditures prior to June of last year, June 2017.
So understanding that, I think what, what Raymond was saying though is, we need to make sure there's a policy in effect so that it clearly states when funds come in, there's a documented system that says these need to be spent by this day with checks and balances. Understanding that our new CBO and ED will take care of that, but just making sure that we put something like-
We can certainly set up some procedures that can be put in place.
Well, Kathy, I would also like to probably, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Diaz has that in his agenda, to train the staff about that, because I have a feeling even some of the staff are not sure of what is expected or what are the legal steps are. So I think it's very important that we do a training for them as well and basically guide them through what is expected and what is not, what they should and shouldn't do. And that will help also with the expenses.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just to help out there, because it's one thing to say, and I'm pretty sure we can go back and say, whose job was it to ma, I'm pretty sure we could answer that.
Yes, we can.
And we could assign a name to him. And so, so I'm not so much comfortable saying, well, any money that we get after Mr. Diaz is on the hook, he's responsible. So we can point at him, just like we can point back at that other person. But I think what Mary says is very compelling and that there's some mechanisms in place that says, hey, maybe there's, as a part of his monthly report, he's saying, hey, we've got some money that we need to spend by this time for these purposes, just letting you know. In the next month, hey, we've got some more money to spend by this time for these purposes, you know, that are, I think, called restricted funds or what?
Unrestricted and unrestricted. But we'll develop a set of procedures and bring it back for your information, not necessarily approval, because it will be developed based on his expertise. But there are, those checks and balances are actually already in place. They just need to be implemented, so.
And when you say they're already in place, that means that, so there was a policy or a practice in place that just wasn't followed?
That's correct.
Which is why I'm emphasizing the training.
Right.
And so these funds, it looks like they're for staff development, is that right?
Yeah. Educator Effectiveness has to do with staff training, staff development, mentor teachers, anything that, that raises the level of, of teacher effectiveness for classroom instruction. Or actually admin effectiveness too, because it applied to administration as well. And it depends a lot on the resolution that should have been done, identifying the areas that it was going to be spent on, but I understand that was not done as well.
So just to push the stick further in the eye, so we've got thirty-eight thousand dollars, greater than thirty-eight thousand dollars that we could have spent on teacher development.
Staff development, mm-hmm. Yeah. Professional development.
For all variety.
Mentor, mentor teachers, release time, yeah, there was a lot of money. Now, this is, this one is strictly for the Chino account right now. So these are the, this account targets the closed Chino school. We are currently going through our records and books now to identify the funds that can be, or the expenditures that we have to make expense transfers over so that we have the professional development workshops, conferences tagged for the SOC campus. These funds were not received for the SV campus.
Does Chino have this money in their account?
Yes.
They have thirty-eight thousand in their account?
Mm-hmm. Barely, but yeah.
The report that Mr. Stern presented last week had these funds accounted for.
Yeah.
Sadly.
I remember that.
Okay.
I mean, I think this is why it was so important that we hired a CBO so that we've got, because I mean, no matter what policies and procedures we have in place, if the person who's tasked with doing this doesn't know how to do it or doesn't do it, it doesn't matter how good our policies and procedures are, so.
I agree.
Not to say that we don't need them, and I still think that that and the training and all that's good, but it still comes down to somebody's responsibility. I think getting the right person in there is-
And the accountability is the other key part to that.
Right.
Yeah, but I like the idea when Kathy said that we don't have to approve it necessarily every month, but in the little format that we give to the CBO that says, hey, you've got a bunch of ideas about things you want to come to us with, we would just like to, pretty please with sugar on top, add a little section that says, if there's funds that we need to spend by a certain, certain date, let's talk about those. Because if I'm sitting in the audience and I hear you say, I've got some funds to spend on something, I will happily help you out there, right? So I want to be able to step forward and say, raise my hand and, you know, have some Raymond development.
Well, and I-
Sorry.
Well, if we get a Raymond development grant, we'll make sure that it gets used appropriately. But I think that's information that would be really helpful getting out to the chancellors in a situation like this and letting them know, we have thirty-eight thousand dollars left for you to spend. Please encourage your teachers to take advantage of development opportunities, help them identify them. So just getting that information out to everyone.
Or identify what's already been done.
Right.
Because in this case, it was really the basic identification of all of the things that had already been done.
Okay. So does this have to be a roll call? All right, we will do this.
We're spending money.
We're spending money by returning money. So we're going to put this to a vote. Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Ms. Trichet?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Ouch, yes.
Mr. Haney, yes. This motion passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda is item five, Adoption of Fiscal Policies Manual to Be Effective, July 1, 2018. The Board will be asked to approve the adoption of a fiscal policies manual to be adopted, to be submitted as part of the NOV response, which will contain all the fiscal operating procedures, policies, and protocols presented by Kathleen Dougherty.
So I'm not going to ask the Board to approve it at this point because it appears that we were operating off of an older draft instead of a newer one, and there are some components that are missing. But I would like to ask Osvaldo to come forward, if he could, and speak to this because Osvaldo and I worked on this together. And we will still finish what we were doing as far as the complete proposal. And when we submit our documents for the NOV, we'll submit it in its draft form and it'll come back to you for final approval at our May 24 meeting. So, Osvaldo?
Thank you. What we have been doing is both reviewing policy, the policy and procedures of Opa, not only for completeness and best practices, but also to address the issues that we're having both on the FICMAT report and the, the notice that we received from Capistrano Unified. I just want to point, quickly point out that the FICMAT report actually states that there were some loans from Opa to what seems to be related entities of the organization. And, but at the same time, those, those loans did not comply with ed code and of course to generally accepted accounting principles in the sense that even though they were related, they, they, they were not proper. And I, I stop at a point of saying flat, flat out illegal, because that's of course for legal to decide, but definitely were not appropriate. And part of the policy and procedures that you will be reviewing in the next meeting, and you have a draft as well, include the, a, a draft that we are calling intra-company loan transfer for operational expenditures. And what this will allow is for schools to actually be able to receive and grant loans to other schools within Opa, but not beyond that. So we're not talking about related organizations or anything like that by intra-company and the definition according to legal. And, and of course, I, not here, but while working for Magnolia Public Schools, we actually went over the definition with Young Mini and particularly with Jerry Simmons as well. And intra, intra-company is basically what, the definition that we need to use, which is we are operating under the same tax, federal tax ID number. And even though each school has its own ID number statewide, but they all operate within the same IRS federal tax ID number. And, and this document will allow those, those temporary transfers or loans that will be documented and brought to the Board for approval as well. So that's the other piece that the FICMAT report stated, that there was a lack of oversight, that the Board was not actually, had not, had no visibility of these loans. And of course, all of this was happening beyond the, the visibility of the Board. And that's what we're remedying. The idea of this new policy and procedures is to provide transparency. That's- That's, that's my first and foremost action, and what I'm targeting to, to provide transparency both to the board and to the community as well, of what is happening as far as finance, loans, and any other related issues in, in the business of OPA.
Can you speak to the restrictive changes that we put in regarding amounts that can be spent or expanded without board approval, and then what's required for board approval?
So what we, what we did, and as I mentioned, we, we are still reviewing it, but this preliminary draft includes both the amounts that, that each officer will actually have a limit on approving. And this will have a coapproval, so to speak. The same person that is actually submitting the expense cannot approve. So let's say that I want to submit my own expense report, I cannot approve it. So we, we definitely need to have that segregation and, I wouldn't say segregation of duties, but it's more of having two persons and be able to view the expenditures and then approve the expenditures. And of course, this will, will actually help with what was happening in the past, where one person had full control and autonomy of not only submitting the expenses, but also approving it, and that's what got us in trouble. So by having that segregation of having one person submit the expense and then another one approve it, that's the first control. And then, of course, the CBO will in turn also review all of those expenditures for completeness and for, just to make sure that within the law and they're providing a true benefit education outcome to the students, then of course, the check will, will be issued. So, so we have several layers of actually review and approval. And we also, in addition to that, we have limits. So once we reach a certain limit, and we, we're still discussing what, we were thinking about fifteen thousand,
Fifteen.
We might bring it down, we're still discussing that. But after that, a certain threshold, that will need to be brought to the board for approval as well. So, so we're working in tiers, and, because of course, it wouldn't be feasible to be, to bring every single check for approval. But at the same time, we, we want to make sure that we have certain thresholds where the board has that visibility.
And just for your awareness, the original threshold was fifty thousand, and what we've done is dropped it down to fifteen thousand, which may not be enough based on the size of the organization and the types of expenditures. But that was our recommendation, is that we, we work with that fifteen thousand, requiring anything above ten thousand to be approved, not just by the executive director and the CBO, but also by the board chair. And then anything fifteen thousand or more has to be approved by the entire board. So significant difference from what it was before.
And I, I do believe that those are the type of controls that we need in order to make sure that what was happening in the past doesn't happen again.
I don't know if I mentioned this, but I'm very happy that you're here, thank you.
Thank you.
When you say intra, intra-company, do you mean if SOC needs to borrow money from SV? Is that what you mean?
Yes, between schools only.
Got it.
And there's, there's a definition between inter-company and intra-company. Intra-company is between different, either divisions or, or silos that operate under the same tax ID number, which is our case. We, we operate schools that have a very specific state-assigned school number, but at the same time, they both are operating on the same tax ID, IRS tax ID number, and they're consolidated on the ten, on the reports, the nine ninety reports.
For the intra-company, well, we also have thresholds there that require approval, so we're not.
Actually, all, all of, all of the transactions are going to be approved by the board. Every single one.
Thank you.
And there's going to be a process. The process is going to be to actually identify the need. And once that need has been identified, and of course, that's identified via cash flow and all of the presentation of financial statements, once we identify the need, we will identify it in advance. It's not like, oh, we need this by tomorrow, but it's more like, we're heading towards this, we're going to be needing this cash resources by X. That is brought to the board for voting, and of course, the, the document, one is, once it has been approved by the board, the executive director, I will initiate the transfer, and the executive director will approve that transfer with the board approval.
So this will come back to you with the updated components, but Osvaldo and I are, are being very conservative in what we're looking at in the language to make sure that it meets our needs, but it also demonstrates to our authorizers, both of them, that we're being fiscally sound and fiscally conservative.
The, the other thing that I wanted to point out is that this document also mentions that all of the loans have to be short-term, and we need to have it that way in order to comply with GAAP, because if, if not, then we are actually going into a completely different ballgame. So the idea is to have short-term loans, temporary loans most likely because of funding deficiencies that the state goes into a deferral mode or something like that. And then at that moment, we know that we're going to get the money, it's just when are we going to get the money? And instead of going to a bank or selling receivables, we, we, and if, in that case, we end up losing ten percent of our resources. Instead of going that route, we are actually doing it internally with zero interest. So it's a benefit for everybody.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Diaz?
I like what I'm hearing.
Thank you.
Ms. Doherty, did you have anything else to add?
No, that was it. I appreciate Osvaldo stepping up and working with me, even though he's not officially on duty yet. He's been very responsive, early in the morning and late at night.
But we'll see you in the wake, Mr. Diaz.
Oh, we will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I have a question about the, more of a, maybe a procedural question, but it seems like routinely I'm hearing that we have different versions, and we can't move forward on this or that because we haven't been provided with the correct version or that sort of thing. Can you help me understand why it is that we, what happened? Why couldn't we be presented with the right version?
Because I wasn't made aware until this afternoon that I was operating off of the wrong version. Typically speaking, I go to our policy page and pull the most recent policy off and work from that one. And in this particular instance, there were several versions of this document out there.
What do we do to help that not happen?
We're cleaning up our website, and we're cleaning up our storage, our digital storage of, of our policies, so that we can always eliminate, put it in safekeeping by backing up any policy that we've had, so we can go backwards and look in time, but also making sure that they're not visible, so that we're only looking at the most current policy each time.
Do we have a document management system at all?
Not yet.
Okay.
Coming up.
Can we direct staff to look into a document management system?
You absolutely may.
After next week?
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll take on any task after the fourteenth.
Thank you. All right, item six, Adoption of Fiscal Recovery Plan. The board will be asked to approve the fiscal recovery plan to be submitted as a part of the NOV response, which will outline the actions to be taken to ensure that OPA and its schools remain in sound fiscal health, presented by Kathleen Doherty.
So you don't have to necessarily approve this tonight, this can stay as a draft as well. But it took me a while to actually put this into a format that I could understand, much less everybody else. And what I did was I took a look just at the fiscal side, and looked at the violations or the findings that we were looking at, and then looked at the corrective action. And the biggest one that we have is that we had excessive employees at the top level to manage an organization with only two schools, and we had some unnecessary positions or job titles within that. So if you look over onto the right, you'll see that we did an analysis of administrative needs. We've done an approval of the new org chart, we did that last week. And the new org chart now specifies what positions were eliminated, what positions were retitled with different job responsibilities, and what positions were reduced from either two or three people to one or two people. And these are positions that are typically paid off the top before the money gets allocated to the school sites. The total savings in this category is about six hundred thousand dollars. We then took a look at the second piece, which is the qualified candidates in administrative positions. And the administration and some classified salaries were excessive as compared with other charters and surrounding districts. So there was a new hiring protocol done in July of two thousand seventeen. We are currently finishing up our audit of all personnel, which I will share with the board in closed session, not tonight. And we are going to be creating, matching job descriptions or editing our job descriptions by June to match the positions that we're recommending, that show up in the organizational chart that was adopted. We're revisiting our administrative salary chart and our classified salary chart, and aligning those to the positions, and actually creating salary schedules for both of those. And that will show a change in salaries that are being given. And then the potential conflicts with related parties is basically looking at the relationships. So this was a request that came from our authorizers and also from our board to look at relationships of management, supervisory employees, and other employees. And we are finishing up that, that's part of our audit. You adopted an nepotism policy in January of two thousand seventeen, and we're continuing with that personnel audit, and we will have some recommendations based on that, or some findings based on that. The second, the number five is the location of the main office outside of Orange County is an issue. So we are working to negotiate an early out to the lease or a sublet agreement with that, those particular offices, to relocate to Orange County with a close proximity. I'm putting here that the desired date is August one. I would love for it to be sooner, but a lot of it depends on the first one of negotiating an early out or a lease sublet agreement. And then we have excessive spending on legal fees going toward an appeal for the Chino campus. And at the meeting last week, we approved an addendum with CCSA for the future cost of the final components of the appeal. So we are no longer going to be paying for the, the final components of that appeal, so that pulls that off of our budget and onto theirs. And we do have that documentation, we just need to get, Joseph, did you sign that, by the way?
Sign what?
The, I'll talk to you later.
Did we?
We need to send him that signed document.
Do we want to preemptively address that, if there's a change of legal, the, the legal firm, that they're going to all be included in that same?
Right, thank you, and I will add that to this too. What Raymond was talking about is the fact that our new legal counsel that is going to be moving forward with the appeal has said that they will be able to complete, even coming up to speed, they will hold their costs to what the agreement in, in the addendum is. So we won't have any excess costs where that's concerned. The issue was reserve funds are being used to store the furniture for Chino. We thought we had a buyer for all of the furniture so that we could get out from under the storage, but that didn't happen. So we are now taking steps to advertise for the sale of the furniture, connecting with surrounding districts, and looking to see what new charters are being authorized by the state, and letting them know that we have furniture available at a very reasonable price, so that we can get out from under that payment, that monthly payment.
And how much are we paying a month for that?
Almost five thousand.
And there's, there, something we can do in the interim to cut that five thousand down?
Uh, how big is your garage?
Yeah, good question. You have a truck, I do.
I, you know, it, it's a lot of furniture. Remember, it was the furniture for that entire school site, and that school site was about fourteen hundred kids. So it's a lot of furniture. We did bring some of that furniture over here to replace furniture at the school site and the SOC site, but that was barely a drop in the bucket in comparison to what's in storage.
And what's the, what do we, what's the anticipated value of that furniture?
The, the value right now is about ninety-five thousand dollars. What are we willing to take for it? Significantly lower, just to get out from under the, the five thousand dollar a month payments. And we thought we, again, we thought we had a deal with allegiance charter, but evidently, they have made a deal with their authorizing agency for the authorizing agency to pay for all their furniture.
So let's sell it to the authorizing agency.
I, we'll see if I can get in touch with them, maybe they'll talk to me, because they don't know my name.
Oh, that, got it, we're dealing with that, I get it.
Yeah, okay. I'm a newbie on the horizon, so.
You have to call from a different phone number.
Well, I can call from my cell number.
There you go.
Okay. So then the conflict of interest code was revised once already about a year and a half ago, but I'm going to ask that the board review it one more time and update it as necessary, and that'll be done by June. Other fiscal policies and internal controls. We're looking at the revised fiscal policies. We're requiring the board to review all purchases monthly, and the board action on contracts and purchases over fifteen thousand. And we're adding a new transfer of funds to the related entities policy. The declining enrollment at SOC, our declining enrollment really is the independent study side, not the classroom-based side. And so we're going to be scheduling some meetings with Capistrano and see if we can change the MOU, because this is not a part of the petition, this is a part of the MOU. The talks about the number of independent study students and whether those independent study students can have a link to admission priorities to the seat-based program. And, and then we're going to be reinventing and remarketing that independent study program so that we can attract families. The fiscal oversight and operations, we've hired a new CBO, and we've, we are, we have RFPs out to engage a new back office that better meets the needs of OPA. So that's our.
Can I ask a question on the back office side? So with our new CBO, we have staff that is part of admin and can be trained in these policies. Do we have staff on board that can be used so that we don't need a third party?
I'm going to recommend that we have a third party right now. At some point, you can reevaluate this, a year or so into it. But right now, there, there's a lot of junk, dirt, however you want to say it, that needs to be reorganized and gone through. That is going to take a, a very good team that would be comprised of our, our new CBO, our new executive director, and the new back office, who's competent to do that. So that's what we're looking at. And I would, I would highly recommend that you use a back office until your CBO determines that, that he is capable of hiring the personnel he needs to run, run it from internal.
Can we invite Mr. Diaz up to speak?
Thank you, yes, I, I would definitely like to speak and to answer that question. There is a threshold as far as how many students, schools, and revenue you have, and, and at the same time, having the resources to hire the competent people that you need to actually address all, not only the reporting, but the accounting. There's, this is a little bit different from for-profit. I have worked in for-profit for many years, more than fifteen years. And I know that in for-profit, in a company, it's very easy to actually hire an accountant and be able to, to prepare reports and bookkeeping and all of that. Unfortunately, charter schools have a little bit of complexity, and those are not only the books that need to be kept, but there's also a lot of regulatory reports that need to be done and comply with. And in order to have a good-sized staff to actually address all of those issues, we're probably talking about, yes, a CBO, then also a controller, and most likely another three accountants. And in order to ramp up to that, we, we would actually need to be serving probably, I would say the break-even would be twenty-five hundred students, in order to actually have that. For the most part, all, small charter schools start with a back office, and as they start ramping up and opening new schools and create a CMO, then they, they start hire, hiring their own internal staff. I'm all in favor of bringing our books internally. That's, that's what I like, because I have control, I, I can train my staff, and, and the knowledge doesn't go to a third party. But at the same time, just because of the size and the issues that we're facing, I highly recommend to have a back office service provider, and a good one, for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
And we actually have. And we actually have an excellent one that's going to be submitting a proposal. Happens to be Osvaldo's, Mr. Diaz's former employer.
Current.
Current employer, sorry. Almost former.
Sorry, did we just spill the beans?
No, actually, I, a couple of days before I, I was nominated to the position, I actually resigned from exit.
Okay. So thank you. But we do, they are, they are a superior back office organization, and they serve a few of the charter schools in Orange County. And they are well-known by our authorizers and accepted.
We, we will have a couple bids to measure them against, though. It won't be.
Absolutely. Yeah. We actually, I just wanted you to be aware that they, they are coming in. We, our current back office provider is submitting a bid, as are two others.
Okay. Thank you.
We have four.
Kathleen, do, do either or both of our authorizers offer back office services?
Well, they do their own. There are many times that the county office will offer back office services to the, the charters. I'm not sure about Capistrano. Mrs. Crowley, do they offer, does your, does the district offer back office services to your charters?
We, to the other charters, we, 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 it's, it's best.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Good question.
Just, was a copy of this submitted with our draft response to the NOV to Capistrano?
These documents have not been submitted with the draft response. The response indicated that the documents were going to be there.
If we receive any feedback from that that would, if we were to approve this tonight and we were to then receive feedback that might change some of the wording or something we have in here, would we need to redo this?
Oh. Yeah. You can choose whether you're approving it or not at this point in time. We can submit it as a draft when we submit it and with a tentative approval date of the 24th.
Thank you.
And Kathleen, first of all, I, I really like that we're going back and sort of dotting our i's and crossing our t's here. And as a part of that, when you say that we would review and update our revised conflict of interest code, I think that's laudable. I'm excited about doing that. One of the other things that, since we're looking at our organization, this is a little bit of a reflection period of our org chart, I feel like it might be a good time for us to audit the relationships of management, supervisory employees, in that now might be a good time to say, to relook at that. Because I think we've proven to ourselves more than once that just because we have a written policy on something doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to do it well.
I will be bringing some recommendations forward to the board based on that audit. I don't have the complete audit yet. So that's coming next, at the next meeting.
So, so the next meeting, we're going to know who's connected to who?
Mm-hmm.
Familial relationships, okay?
Right.
And how does that, where does that end? So if Joseph and I are brothers, that's going to come out. But where does that stop?
I think they figure that out.
Everybody knows we're brothers. But if, if you're cousins, does that, like, where does that stop?
We're getting as much information as we can. So we have cousins listed on there as well. And nieces and nephews and.
Mother-in-laws, father-in-laws.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's a pretty in-depth analysis.
Got it.
Ms. Treshay, Ms. Campos, any comments?
I would like to, for us to revise this as a board because there are some items here I'm new, well, I wasn't aware of. So not to contradict what Mrs. Dougherty is doing, just to get a sense and understand why we are making this decision since I wasn't, I'm assuming those decisions were discussed prior to us coming on board. So I would like to get updated a little bit on certain things that are in there. We could do that at closed session or?
We can, we can have a special item on closed session called discipline dismissal release and talk about those items at that time.
Okay.
But at least for the purposes of this document, this is just drafty, right?
This is draft.
Okay.
So I move to postpone it for the May 24th meeting.
Or can we approve it as a draft? We, we don't have to do anything.
We can have it just that it was discussed. Remember, the items here are, you know, the information discussion and action. So this is discussed. It'll be brought back at the next, for the next meeting for approval. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So the motion is to postpone this until the May 24th meeting. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, this motion passes four to zero. Takes us to item seven. Approved resolution number 2018-005, executive director compensation review. The board will be asked to approve resolution 2018-005 for executive director contract review as required by the California Nonprofit Integrity Act, the Internal Revenue Service requirements for tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organization. Presented by Kathleen.
Yours truly. This resolution and the one following simply say that you did a review of the salaries, you did those comparisons before you did your contract, and that's what this says. And that you agree that the compensations that are being given to, in this case, the executive director is within the range. And that it's within the legal confines of the requirements for best practices. And that there have, that you are recognizing on the second page that all of the unique benefits that this person brings to the organization, which is why you're offering that compensation, and that you've been presented with the data that you could look at. That's what this resolution says.
And that was the spreadsheet you handed out at the last meeting?
Yes, and I thought it was attached here.
It was attached to the posted version.
It was attached to my other version.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that. But it was attached.
Got it. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2018-005, executive director compensation review?
You do.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any conversation on this item?
No.
No. This isn't a spending item.
No, this isn't, no. No money.
No money. Okay.
Except for my time.
Except for your time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
Excitedly.
Excitedly. Move on to number eight. Approved resolution number 2018-006, chief business officer compensation review. The board will be asked to review resolution 2018-006 for chief business officer contract review as required by the California Nonprofit Integrity Act and the Internal Revenue Service requirements for tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organizations, presented by Kathleen Dougherty.
This is the same type of resolution. This one just focuses on the CBO position instead of the executive director position. And if you'll recall from the chart that was attached, that, that same chart had the comps for CBO as well as for executive director on there.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 2018-006, chief business officer compensation review?
You do.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any conversation, discussion, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, this motion passes four to zero.
Excitedly.
Excitedly. Item number nine, adoption of policy on creation and transfer of funds to related entities. The board will be asked to adopt the creation and transfer to related entities policy to be submitted as part of the NOV response to ensure that all fund transfers to other entities come before the board for approval regardless of the amount. Presented by Kathleen Dougherty.
And Mr. Diaz spoke to this one already when he was speaking to the fiscal policies, but this one is specific to loan transfers. And it, and the intent in here is that we will not give loans or transfer money to any related organizations that are not our own schools. So basically, it says will not here, and it talks about the person responsible in the funding process. And I was looking for the part that said will not, but, because that is the most important piece of it.
We have a will be used solely for.
That helps. But it actually says will not. Osvaldo, do you remember where it said that?
Not be provided to any other external organizations. 1.7.
Thank you.
That is the one.
That was it.
And definitely, as I was mentioning a moment ago, the sign of this document is to not allow loans to any other organizations, persons, or any external entities that are not a school. And, and for that matter, schools within OPA that are operating under our federal tax ID number.
So what, what this does is this prevents any money from leaving our organization.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt, for an adoption of policy on creation and transfers of funds to related entities?
You do.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any conversation on this?
Mr. Diaz, it's, I like your words that you, when you stood here and you talked about that transfers can't happen to any organization that's, that doesn't share our tax-exempt status number, right?
That is correct.
So, so that would prevent sharing funds from like the honor society. That can't happen because they've got a different number.
That is correct.
But it doesn't say in here.
That, that is the meaning of intra-company. That the word itself, that, that is what it stands for. And if you look it up in the dictionary, it's that exactly.
Intra-company says you have to have the same tax ID number out.
It's, and I, I actually looked it up just before we came here. It's, can you move one second, please? I think I had it in front of me.
If you go to the definition on page one, yeah. Is it good to any external organizations?
Intra-company, balancing for journals that involve different groups within the same legal entity represented by balancing segment values. And inter-company, which of course are accounting for transactions performed between separate legal entities that belong to the same corporate enterprise. So that just, it, it could be what was happening before. What was happening before was inter-company, and just schools would be intra-company.
So I have a question on the terms.
Yes.
Is one year standard? Because I would anticipate if it's just between the entities, if one gets in arrears for whatever the reason, that six months would be reasonable. A year seems like a long time, but.
And the, the one year is just because that's how short-term is actually defined.
Okay.
And that, that is why it's less than one year.
Any additional questions or comments from Mr. Diaz?
So thank you for, for spending that extra time with us. And I'll apologize ahead of time that as we go on and spend more and more time together, given our history, you'll have lots of maybe extra questions about things.
And I will be more than happy to, to answer those questions.
Thank you for that.
And whenever I don't have the, the answer, I will research it and come back with the answer.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion? The motion is to adopt policy on creation and transfer of funds to related entities. It has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion passes. Item 10 is upcoming important dates, presented by Kathleen Dougherty.
Really?
You don't have to say anything.
Well, we do have a very important date coming up, and that's the 14th, which is Monday, which is the final day of submission for our response and documents for the NOV. We have our interview date coming up for chancellor of SOC on the 16th. And we're rearranging our meet and greet a little bit, but some more information will be coming out on that. And, and then we have our, our May 24th date for our next meeting.
All right. Before we leave this all together, I would like to revisit the Think Together contract we approved and propose that we change it so that it is subject to final language being worked out and approved by legal counsel. So that they've had an opportunity, if we're going to do this.
Has it already been done?
To review the whole thing? Just the indemnification language?
The, the entire contract.
Okay.
So they reviewed it, but they only reviewed the indemnification piece?
I was asked to tighten up the indemnification language. I sent the entire, but indemnification language was all that was the focus. I sent it as, I sent it in the text of an email and as an attachment separately.
So we were presented with a document that our legal counsel hadn't reviewed?
The indemnification language was reviewed?
It was reviewed.
Pardon me?
Just that.
Just that. That was the language that was asked to be reviewed. So at this time, we're being asked to have the entire contract reviewed. So when it is reviewed by legal, can we move forward with approval? Because we do have a timeline, and so I don't think we have a meeting before the 24th.
We don't, and we're not going to schedule.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's, does it sound like there's going to be a problem with that? But procedurally, I would love it if we get presented with some document that there's some, sort of the rhythm of how things go, right? Give me a document and you say, this hasn't been reviewed by legal, by the way. So that we all know, right? Because I think that there's, at least from me, in my opinion, there's kind of an expectation that, that this has been vetted. So if we've been presented with something that it's not just rubbish Raymond reading this document and saying, yeah, it looks good, it's, that it's been vetted already. And if there's some parts that haven't or the whole thing hasn't. So thankfully, Joseph, Sage Joseph is, I love that you recommended that, by the way. Thank you for that.
Can I just request, like, so then in the future, can we just have a requirement that if there's any contractual language of any nature, that it goes through legal before it comes to us so that we have confidence that it was vetted properly? Thank you.
Well, well, let me say the other side of that. So if we're reviewing five things and we send all five, and we, we know we've got, we've got an appetite for legal budgets, got an appetite for spending a ton of money on lawyers. So if we, if we automatically send everything that we look at to an attorney to review, they will happily do that and send us a bill for it. So I'm okay with, and I'm just saying this, Mary, this is sort of a conversation piece. I'm okay with, with saying, hey, there's five documents in front of you. They've not been reviewed based on the one that you, and then maybe we can say, hey, we like it, but pending legal approval, we make the approval that way, right? But we're sure to do that.
Okay.
Right? So thankfully, we've got Sage Joseph here who's making sure that we, we get that.
I think the concern is we don't want to be reviewed, send out, you know, if we have to have an electrician come on campus and do work, I don't think that's necessarily a contract we send off to the attorneys to review. I guess if it's large enough perhaps. But something like this, it's a pretty material contract. I think we want to make sure before we commit that it's been reviewed. And I'm not sure where that line's drawn, but maybe that's something for us to figure out.
You okay with that, Mary?
So.
Yep.
So is it approved, though, once legal has reviewed it and we send out notification? That's where I'm confused and just asking for clarification because I need to get back to think.
For this situation or the future?
So I, I need to do a, a protocol piece. We need to rescind the approval of the contract, and then we can reapprove the contract pending legal review.
Do I have a motion to rescind?
You do.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. So the motion then is to approve the Think Together contract.
Well, this first motion, I think, is to rescind.
We've, oh, sorry. That's right. We did a second. Do we have a, all those in favor of rescinding the prior motion approving the Think Together contract say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I think that passed four to zero. Now, the motion is, that I'd like to propose, is that we approve the Think Together contract subject to final language being worked out and approved by legal counsel.
I second that.
No, he can't make the motion.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Sorry.
May I have a second? Or is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, this motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Joseph.
Okay. Thank you.
And that brings us to E, public announcement of reason for closed session. We are going to go conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, government code 54956. code 54956.9D4. Do we have any public comments on closed session items?
We do not.
All right. We are going to closed session at 5:27 PM. The board returns from closed session, returns into open session at 6:10 PM. Reporting out, the board waived its attorney-client privilege as to one email to be included as part of its response to the NOV. Which brings us to our final matter on the agenda, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
You do.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. This motion has passed. The meeting is adjourned at 6:11 PM.